Clock, could you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight marks the annual reorganization of the school committee post the election. And per policy DDA, which is the school committee organizational meeting, I call this meeting to order, and the first order of business is to allow for the election of both a chair and a vice-chair. So at this time, I will take a motion for the new chair of the Mendon Upton Regional School Committee.
Make a motion to nominate Shawn as the new chair for... Second.
Okay, so we have a nomination in a second for Shawn Nicholson to take over as chair of the regional school committee. Is there any discussion? Okay, with that said, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call vote, please.
Lee Martin, aye.
Dorothy Scally, aye.
Dorothy Zeller, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Vicki Lovigson, aye.
Shawn Nicholson, aye.
Congratulations, Mr. Chair. All right. Don't get my camera. Awesome power.
All right, so we'll continue with the nominations. I'd like to ask for a motion for the vice-chair person.
I nominate Dorothy Scally as vice-chair of the school committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dorothy Zeller, aye.
Dorothy Scally, aye.
Lee Martin, aye.
Shawn Nicholson, aye.
Vicki Lovigson, aye.
Carrie Lawrence, aye.
Passes. I'd like to entertain a motion for...
So first, the next approval.
Oh, okay, okay, good point, good point. So I'd like to have a motion for approving the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Also, the meeting minutes from the last session, the open session minutes of May 13th, 2019, can I get a motion for approving that?
Motion for the minutes from...
May 13th.
May 13th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's continue with the reorganization of the school committee. Up we've got, next, the position of secretary. Can I get a motion for nomination of a secretary, please?
I'm making a motion to nominate Vicki for secretary again.
Second.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I didn't hear any votes, so we'll move on to the next nomination. Can I get a motion, as you recall, TAF Library Trustee, you've had this position held by Lee Martin for the past few years.
Yeah, as a committee, I'd like to stay on as TAF Library Trustee.
So can I entertain a motion for TAF Library Trustee, please?
I make a motion to nominate Lee Martin as the TAF Library Trustee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The Ristin Fund representative, as everybody recalls, we've had this position nominated out of Upton for many years, and the last person who had it was me.
Bill?
You're not going to continue doing that unless I figure Dorothy really wants it.
Okay. Can I entertain a motion for nominating?
I nominate Phil Dizeller for the Ristin position.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. As we know, the Assistant Treasurer position, I've held that. There's some signing up to do and some complexity to the job, so it's probably easy if I continue it, and I'm willing to do that. So may I hear a motion for continuing, having me continue as the Assistant Treasurer?
I move to nominate Shawn Nicholson as the Assistant Treasurer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And, okay, so now we've got, that's the officers of the committee. Now we've got the subcommittee positions.
Technically, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, there's just three positions, you can probably handle them together, because they're technically considered to be official positions. That would be Treasurer, which basically is the signatory on invoices, checks. That's Joe Lakeview, who is also our Director of Technology Operations, the Clerk of the School Committee, which is Kelly, and myself as the Blackstone Valley Education Consortium representative.
Okay, so I so moved.
I can't make that.
Sorry, I got fancy. Do I hear a second?
Second, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what made Shawn motion that?
So I motioned that what Joe said, which was Joe Lakeview, Kelly McCowrath, and Joe for Treasurer, SC Clerk, and Blackstone Valley Educational Consortium.
Okay, and Lee seconded it?
Yes.
Mr. Robert from Robert's Rules is turning over.
Dorothy, Dorothy seconded it.
I think they have a card on this one.
Okay, so now we've got appointments of the subcommittees. All right, so we handle each one of the subcommittees as a single motion?
It's probably smart to do that. That way you have a solid sense of what three members are in each committee.
All right, so could I have a motion from anybody on the committee to, for the budget subcommittee participants, nominations? Fishing around for others here. Does anybody have that?
I make a motion for Shawn Nicholson, Phil Dizeller, and Lee Martin to comprise the budget subcommittee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now can I get a policy subcommittee nomination motion, please?
Go ahead, you can do it.
Yeah.
Let me do it. I'll do it.
I nominate Lee Martin, Dorothy Scally, and Vicki Lovigson to be the policy subcommittee.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Dorothy, right? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Negotiations Subcommittee is next. Can I have a motion to nominate for that subcommittee?
All right, I make a motion to nominate Phil Dizeller, Carrie Lawrence, and Shawn Nicholson for the Negotiations Subcommittee.
Second.
Seconded by Lee? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so Superintendent's Evaluation Subcommittee, the last subcommittee, no, second to last subcommittee we have. Can I get a motion for nominations for that committee, please?
I make a motion to nominate Carrie Lawrence, Vicki Lovigson, and Dorothy Scally for the Nittmuck Evaluation Subcommittee.
Second.
Second by Dorothy. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Lastly, we have the Golden Apple Award Subcommittee, which technically isn't established as one of the school administration subcommittees, so we have three informal positions for that. Can I get a motion for nominations for the Golden Apples Award Subcommittee?
I make a motion to nominate Vicki Lovigson, Carrie Lawrence, Dorothy Scally, and Phil Dizeller.
Sure.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Dorothy. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we are done with that. So now let's move on to, let's move on to the student comments.
All right, well, as always, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to be here and give the student comments for today. So as you know, we're getting pretty close to the end of the school year, and I'm pretty sure that we're all excited to have a fun summer. So starting off tonight, we have the Financial Wellness Fair, which is coming up. On Tuesday, June 4th, Nittmuck will be hosting a financial literacy fair for all sophomore and junior students. Before the event, students completed an interest inventory that focuses on their strength and identifies potential careers. Students then receive an assigned career and salary that might match up with their future employment. On the day of the fair, students make their way through the gym to various booths in which they make decisions about how to spend their money. We have a variety of booths staffed by community partners for students to visit. These include both banks and local employers, who represent all types of expenses. During the fair, students will have the opportunity to win fun prizes by spinning the Wheel of Fortune, playing Financial Bingo, and turning in their spending sheets for a chance to win the grand prize. The Financial Literacy Fair is an experience that challenges the students to make responsible decisions about how to spend their salary wisely, save for the future, and maintain financial wellness. Coming up soon also is the 21st Century Learning Conference. Nittmuck will be host to our next Full School Day 21st Century Learning Conference Day on Thursday, June 6th of 2019. Our conferences are the days when we throw away the traditional schedule of Nittmuck and with the help of professional partners organize a conference for our students. The conference is designed to connect the learning that takes place every day in our classrooms to the real world while centering around student interests. The upcoming conference will be called "The Community as Our Classroom." This year, we asked students, if you had the opportunity to learn locally, off-campus, or outside for one day, where would you go and what would you do? Our hope is to get all students outside of the classroom and off-campus for a fun day of learning. Next up, I'd like to recap the 2019 Fine Arts Festival. As I'm sure most of you knew, that a few weeks ago, we held the Fine Arts Festival in the gym at Nittmuck, and it was a grand success. There were prizes distributed to multiple pieces, and both elective and standard art class pieces were put on display. We had judges come from outside of the school to judge the pieces, and overall, it was a great success. So as I'm sure a lot of you already know, graduation also happened in the past week. This year, Nittmuck graduated 154 graduates on Friday night, June 1st. Class of 2019 speakers were Kate Nadolski, President, Kayla Seguero, Christina Vinslet, Kaylee Williams, and some more, I think. The band chorus performed as well as graduates Anita Lawrence and Angela Almaro, who sang an original song. So anyway, yeah, that concludes the student comments, and I want to kind of thank you guys for allowing me to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Owen.
So next up...
Not to be out of order, but I think you're all lucky Owen wasn't up for any of the committees of the chair position. No, thank you.
You're doing very well giving student comments, so we really appreciate it.
We appreciate it, honestly.
Thanks so much.
So next up is community comments. Any comments from the community? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next superintendent's comments.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Just a couple of quick things of note. I would echo Owen's comments with regard to graduation. Once again, this absolutely lovely ceremony. And again, the class of 2019 just tops. A terrific group of young men and women, just kind, compassionate, so a lot to be proud of. As I note in my background notes, something that I think is just absolutely remarkable is, just as a final update, and I know I reported on this like a couple of months ago, we actually finished with 20 students who had the Massachusetts Seal of By Literacy on their diploma. All 20 for being proficient in both Spanish and English. Majority of students were Spanish immersion students. However, there were some that just were upper-level students and one who's a native speaker. So for a district our size, for a high school the size of Nittmuck to have 20 kids with that Seal of By Literacy is absolutely remarkable. It's a super, super high bench. So hats off to our teachers who got our students to that place all across the district. Second piece, something else that we're really pleased about is, and you'll see a little bit more about this, but our connection with the Consulate General of Spain, specifically the educational office. It bears a lot of fruit for us as far as additional resources for teachers in the Spanish immersion program. The Educational Advisor, Manuel Colazo, will be in district this coming Thursday, as a matter of fact, to present diplomas to our fourth-grade students in the program at Memorial as part of kind of just an informal ceremony for the transition to middle school. So once again, we're very proud of our relationship with the Spanish consulate and look forward to continuing that partnership for additional support and resources for our program. Okay? Next thing that I have, and this is per our policy JFBB on school choice, that before the conclusion of this school year, and then in August, to do a public accounting of officially how many school choice openings we have, because of some of our budgetary challenges, which are, I'm going to talk about a little bit later in the meeting, we have very, very limited school choice openings for next school year. So at Clough, the only opening, it's a grand total of four openings at the kindergarten level, there are zero openings at Memorial, zero openings at Misco Hill, and at Nittmuck Regional, five openings in grade nine, one opening in grade 10, and one opening in grade 11. Okay? And as I say, per our policy, should there be any additional openings, should anything shift during the course of the summer months, then our meeting prior to the opening of school, August 21st, we will do a public announcement. Okay? And that's my report.
All right, very good. So next, we have Portrait of Graduate Scholar Initiative, coming from John Clements and Mary Anne. That's a tax administrative comment.
Great, thank you.
How you doing over there?
Sure. So, you know, as I say in the background notes, John and Mary Anne have done a tremendous job this school year within their school community to really promote the Portrait of a Graduate, and really specifically to empower staff, but even more powerfully, students to define each of the Portrait of a Graduate competencies. So I asked them here tonight to just kind of talk about the year-long journey and what has come of it, and potentially what the next steps are.
Thanks, Dr. Allen. Thanks, everybody. We're excited to be here. I'm glad to share some of the work that we've been doing on Portrait of the Graduate. You have in the background notes a link to this URL. We'll walk you through some of it today. But we tried to capture some of our Portrait of a Graduate journey through a website so it can stay live and transparent for the community to conceive the work that we've been doing throughout the course of the year. So on the main page, you find this great quote, which I think aligns so much with the district and what we're doing. "Not merely survive, but to thrive. We do so with passion, compassion, humor, and style." I think it aligns with our district's mission of empowering all learners to thrive, and really is a great starting point for our work with Portrait of the Graduate.
Yeah, they need part of that quote, as it came from one of our students. One of the students found that quote and shared it with us. So really, the Portrait of the Graduate, after the district adopted the new strategic plan, we got to work on kind of exploring the new Portrait of the Graduate. Do you want to click on the second tab?
Sure.
So we tried to, and I know you saw our timeline from before we... This is just the work that we've been doing with Portrait of the Graduate, so it's actually reversed, the stuff we did at the end of last year, beginning of this year is all the way at the bottom of that timeline, so we'll work up a little bit. So we spent time over the course of the year, end of last year, beginning of this year, kind of digging into the Portrait of the Graduate in terms of getting feedback from our students. So we have what's called Food for Thought Lunches. I'm skipping ahead, probably. Food for Thought Lunches. So part of it was really getting students' perspective as to what does it mean to be a global citizen? And what does it mean to be a mindful learner? So embedded in that, we, over the course of the year, and we hold these lunches every other week, ask students two questions in relation to each of the Portrait of the Graduate skills. So what are the specific skills embedded within each of those competencies? So when we say to be a global citizen, what did the students interpret that as? And if, once they can identify those skills, then what are the experiences that they're going to need in order to develop those skills? So thinking about what do they need to do in high school in order to get to a spot where they feel like they have spent time developing those?
We see the Portrait of the Graduate is a really clear through-line, pre-K through 12 in the district, and there's a lot of power in the strategic plan, but the Portrait of the Graduate is where the rubber hits the road. It's the skills and knowledge disposition our kids need to be successful in the world beyond high school. And so we thought, let's begin with the kids and find out what they think about this. We've asked similar questions to our community advisory board, and we've also worked with our faculty. So asking that question, okay, what are the skills you need if you're an inspired innovator or a skillful collaborator? And what are the experiences you need? And by pairing those two things, I think we found some really powerful results.
So that was kind of coming up with common definitions and gaining an understanding within our community. And then at the end of December, we took a full day and we took, it was about 30 people total, but we had Nittmuck students, we had students from Misco Hill, we had graduates from Nittmuck, and we had Nittmuck educators as well. They were there, they were part of the day, where we really dug in to say, this is the Portrait of the Graduate, how can we make it come to light at Nittmuck Regional? So those students spent the day together, really kind of almost becoming experts in one of the six competency areas. And out of that, we were able to develop a self-reflective tool, which we're pretty excited about. So this was completely student-created, obviously with the assistance of the few educators that were in the room as well, but came up with ICANN statements. So if they're a global citizen, what are the things that they can do? I can educate myself on current and past global issues. I can respect value, acknowledge different environments, cultures, and situations. So for each of the competencies, they came up with the ICANN statements. The next column, you'll see some reflective questions. So if you were thinking about yourself as a global citizen or as a mindful learner, what are the types of questions you'd ask yourself? And then that final column there, well, second to last one, the one that has text in it, is prompts, reflective prompts. So we took those prompts, and the students used those after our 21st Century Learning Conference. But trying to redevelop this model of not having our students wait for the educators to receive back, but really helping our kids start to become reflective about the skills that they possess, the skills that they need to continue to work on, and then having our educators be the ones that are pushing them and helping kind of develop that plan. So you see that last column as feedback. So thinking of feedback in terms of what if and I wonder. So getting her to push their thinking, rather than saying you got an A or you're exemplary in this category, really trying to get them to be even further reflective about the experiences, say, well, what if you had done this? Or I wonder if you had engaged in this experience, how that could help you continue to grow.
We've had a lot of district support on this, but I think one of the reasons we've taken the challenge on Nittmuck is that for our accrediting organization, they ask us to develop what they call a vision for the graduate. This is that. And in addition, measure student achievement and whole-school achievement of how well kids are doing in reaching the competencies embedded in the Portrait of the Graduate. And so traditionally, that has been done with the old-school rubric. Warning leads improvement, proficient and exemplary. And I think, you know, you look at inspire and you look at empowering all learners to thrive, it's not traditional. It encourages people to be on the forefront. One of the pieces of our vision is about changing the paradigm around education. And so we work closely with our accrediting organization too, and have been sharing this work. You know, they're excited that it breaks the model of thinking of it as teacher-directed assessment of learning, instead involves it as a culture of learning, where kids are continually reflecting on their growth. It also opens up the opportunity for some non-traditional learning experiences, what we call learning adventures. So things that kids encounter during their high school career that is on top of the solid instruction and the door-opening assessment that our teachers provide every day. Jump back to our journey for a minute.
Sure, so that was December. So January was our 21st Century Learning Conference, and during the 21st Century Learning Conference, each of the sessions that students attend were aligned to one of the competencies. So at the end of that day, we piloted the tool. And every student went into their small group advisories at the end of the day and took the last 20 minutes to take those reflective prompts, do a mini-self-assessment on where they felt they were just in that single competency that was aligned to their experience of the day, so they weren't looking at them all, and then to write some reflections out of that. So that day, we captured 650 reflections from our kids based on the Portrait of the Graduate.
We're believers in not waiting until it's perfect, but build on the plane while you fly it. And so get some feedback, figure it out, iterate, make some changes. But the power of that was having 651 reflections on the Portrait of the Graduate, which we then said, what if we use these and turned it into some sort of way where we could highlight not only the achievements of our kids, but highlight what the Portrait of the Graduate means for our district? So then it's an easier way to understand this tool. And so we went to our Lead Learning Workshops. Again, those are our kind of reimagined department chair meetings, where you have teachers and students and administrators sitting down together and working, our most important leadership meetings. And based on the recommendation of advisors, we went through a blind process where we narrowed down those 600-plus reflections to a smaller group that stood out for the quality of the reflection, the story they told, the emphasis on growth, the power of reflection. And through that process, we boiled it down to 32 students' reflections, none of which had names on them, which was kind of an exciting part to see who's going to come forward as someone who's really embracing this idea and can model Portrait of the Graduate for us.
So the other piece of those Portrait of the Graduate scholars was they were representative of 9 through 12, so we weren't just talking about our seniors who had had kind of a full range of experiences at Nittmuck. So on April 24th, we spent another full day. This time, we spent it with those 32 students who were willing and ready to kind of jump into the challenge of reflecting on their experience and reflecting on themselves in terms of the Portrait of the Graduate.
When we proposed this idea to them, we said, here's the process, here's what happened, you were selected through this. What we'd like to do is develop a digital profile and give you an extra-quarter credit, and provide you with a photographer who's going to take your picture and show you in a different, better headshot than you get from a school photographer, and help us to advertise it.
So some of it was just helping the kids kind of further build, you know, their skills at reflecting, looking at themselves as learners and the uniqueness that's embodied in each of them. And part of it was kind of focused on the writing and the peer editing and the building of what was going to be that profile for them. And part of it, Diane Duncan spent the day with us and did photography for us. A part of it was they were being pulled outside to get their pictures taken. But at the end of that day, each scholar essentially had their profile done and ready to go. So if you click on the Meet the Scholars tab, if you're following along with us, we've put together, and we didn't force any students to choose kind of what competency they felt that they connected most with. Each scholar was allowed to choose the one that they felt resonated most with them or they had an experience that aligned with. So each of our scholars picked one of them, and then as you click into any of those students, it starts to become their story. So part of this is helping kind of see the uniqueness of our students, but also to redefine success. So what does success look like for each student? So on each of their profiles, you'll see, this is Silvana's. She's got her bio up top in the white section, in the blue section. They all start with either I'm a global citizen, I'm a mindful learner, but then tells her story about why she feels... I'm a mindful learner, but then tells her story about why she feels she's a global citizen and talks about her involvement with the debate club at Nittmuck and why she's pretty passionate about giving back and making a difference in the world. So kind of her story through all of that. Then they each picked a quote that resonated most with them, and then three numbers that they felt told their story. You know, something more than the number of siblings you have, or, so you can see here, 6,816, number of miles you traveled from home, 80 hours for volunteering. So that's obviously important in our world, and then 72 hours at debate competition. So starts to really capture who our kids are, which is pretty powerful. Here's Aiden's.
Aiden is a junior, and he tells a little bit of his story, pictures himself as a global citizen. And in his story here, you begin to hear how much he's passionate about making social impact. It's personal aspects of their individual and their growing up and their moment, their aha moments, their epiphanies intertwined with their school moments. And it tells a really powerful story. You see Aiden's quote, "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time. We're the ones who've been waiting for, we are the change we seek." And then you've got his quotes there. Tells a little bit about his, as a traveler, him as the goalie of our lacrosse team and other accomplishments that he's excited about. Lilly's is another one that jumped out to us. Lilly, a student who found power in being able to express herself through poetry. Which is really cool when you look at these, is you hear people who traveled from other countries, found the social cause they're passionate about, whose lives were changed from being a member of the Spanish immersion program, who found their courage and strength on the ski slopes, overcoming and persevering past injuries. Every single one of our kids has a story to tell that aligns naturally with the sense of the Portrait of the Graduate. Mary Ann mentioned, we didn't ask any of them to choose a particular part of the portrait to reflect on, but they were all able to grasp a piece of it, make sense of it, and a really personally meaningful way. And so I think it's kudos to the district, to the teachers and the parents, community members and kids who put together this portrait, because it really rings true when you see these 32 stories and these 32 profiles.
So I think for us, this is, this is just the beginning. You know, this is the tip of the iceberg. This is the story of 32 kids. We have 651 stories that, you know, we need to tell and we need to help our students tell. And it's a process to help our kids be reflective, and it's not something that they all do naturally. So excited about the work ahead, excited about our continued work with Portrait and see where this goes.
Outstanding work. It's great. So where do you anticipate the next step would be? How are you going to evolve this into, into, I don't know, it'd be nice to obviously to get all 650 kids on it, that's, that's the step we take. But how is this going to help kids determine what they want to be in the future? I would assume that's where you're going to, where you're going to go next.
Yeah, so I think it, our intentionality and tying it to our 21st Century Learning Conference experience is at this point too. So it's about finding the experiences that our students need to develop those skills, right? So it's about determining what those skills are, finding the experiences, and understanding that everyone is at a unique point in their journey, right? So what someone might be very adept at the skills associated with being a global citizen, where someone else might be a set of experiences. So we talk about learning adventures, and I think that's a part of it. I think it's a part of helping our kids be reflective and then giving them the opportunities they need to really dig in and kind of learn by doing in some of these opportunities. And learning cross-grade, I think, is powerful. I think extending this to the middle and elementary schools is going to be really powerful. You know, some of our scholars have already asked if they can work with middle schoolers to help middle schoolers do some of this work in being reflective, but yeah. So I'm sure of the endpoint, but...
And just naturally, I think of being reflective, I think of, I think of all of a sudden realizing what you've accomplished, what your tendencies are, how you can take those into the future, right? That's part of being reflective. So, you know, this is, like, I look at this and I go, oh wow, I need this for the, for college, or college applications, whatever. But I'm just, I'm wondering if that's what you're thinking is.
Yeah, you know, we wanted to get actionable with this and have some outcomes at the end. And I think the outcomes are the reflective tool in a way now to measure it and develop collaborative use for kids and teachers and everyone in the community. We've made a first stab and found some of the things that work well with the tool and some of the things that don't work with it. We've linked it now to part of our programming, but it hasn't been embedded in the day-to-day experiences at Nittmuck. So I think that is something that as a learning community, we have to tackle. How do we begin to bring this more to the Monday through Friday life at Nittmuck?
Yeah.
As opposed to these big highlighter events at the same time? I feel like in these highlighted moments, you have a template of how it can scale to other opportunities within the district. And it's really powerful when you read the stories and you see what these kids are able to accomplish and how through the portrait, they're finding out who they are and what they're passionate and curious about. So it's the beginning of a journey for sure, but we feel like it's some progress.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, subcommittee updates, the policy subcommittee.
All right, policy subcommittee met immediately prior to this meeting, 6 o'clock. In your packet, we've included the first read of several policies that needed updating or more information added to kind of reflect the current nature of the health field, including the information about e-cigarettes and vaping, some nomenclature changes in terms of, you know, changing inoculations to immunizations. There aren't major substantive changes, it's mainly upgraded all the way around on those. So, and, you know, they kind of match up with state regulations and current practice. And we've been advised by Leslie McGinnis, who's taken a really great role in helping us kind of develop these policies and make sure they're consistent with both practice and legal ramifications, so.
Could you review just, just for refresher, how, what the process is for approving the changes to the policies? So this is our first reading, this is our first step.
Right.
Right? And then we would go through...
Typically, it's first read, second read, and approval. We can waive either first read or second read.
If there was a sense of urgency, where a policy needed an immediate change, then that first read could be waived and you could go to, directly to second read and approval.
Okay. But this is in the case for these?
This isn't the case. This is just kind of being proactive in that Leslie, in her capacity as kind of overseeing the nurses, in a kind of nursing coordination position, took it upon herself to kind of do a policy review of our handbook of anything that was related to student health issues, and came forward with, I think it was a collection of about seven or eight different policies that kind of spoke to different health issues. So what you have in front of you kind of deals with a lot of issues around screening and around immunizations. And what will be brought forward will be, for next meeting, is a first reading on some specific policies regarding field trips and some of the health requirements, particularly for overnight and field trips abroad.
So there's more coming?
There's more coming.
Okay.
Policies, yeah.
So, so, just a quick question. So these are new policies?
No, they're just revisions.
Okay, because there's no red lines in the physical examination of students?
Yeah, that, that got published as two separate documents. One was the original and one was the changes, because the second was all red. They changed the title even to it, I believe.
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah.
The screenings are...
Oh, so it's now screening and physical examination.
Yeah, the reason I included that is because...
So are these changes driven from a legal perspective or are they driven from a personal kind of perspective?
No, it's to update them so that they're commensurate with some updated DPH regulations. And then some of them are, you know, for example, the policy that is on, um, just give me one minute. The policy on tobacco-free schools has an inclusion about e-cigarettes and vaping material. So that would be obviously an update.
Yeah. So this is our opportunity to go through the first reading, and if we have any comments or suggestions or questions, we'll get a second reading as well, and then we have the opportunity to... Okay. Any questions or further discussion? All right, moving on, we've got the budget subcommittee. So that I, I'm going to turn it over to you, Joe.
Okay, thank you. So the budget cut subcommittee met a week ago tonight, I believe it was, or actually last Tuesday, to kind of review the status quo. Unfortunately, on the revenue side, the Senate budget was also remarkably disappointing, just like the House budget. They kept in place the House increase of $30 per additional per student, so we did not pick up any additional revenue there. And they also increased regional transportation reimbursement by $2 million for the entire state, saying that the, that would represent a 2% additional increase in reimbursement. There's a no, the cherry sheet shows us picking up absolutely no increase whatsoever. So we have to use that. So with those projections on revenue, plus coupled with the fact that we had to alter our estimates for both out-of-district special education transportation and also homeless transportation, our shortfall, our projected shortfall for FY 2020 at this moment is $326,036, which is fairly significant. So with that challenge and a state requirement of June 1st for notification of any type of layoffs, unfortunately, last week, we had to exercise the layoffs or non-replacement of a grand total of six positions across the district. I detailed them, I will publicly delineate them now. First position is high school library media specialist, full-time position. Second position is full-time middle school library and media specialist. Then a full-time CLUF special education inclusion teacher. Then also a full-time district-wide technology support specialist. With the challenge of the budget, unfortunately, we're looking at only going with one strand of Spanish immersion for kindergarten. Therefore, there will be a lottery in place for that, but also that would be one less Spanish immersion paraprofessional. Then from each CLUF memorial, it's the lessening of a .5 FTE academic tutor. So as you can see, as I put in the background notes, it's a total of 6.0 FTEs, which represents a reduction in our budget of $313,873. So obviously, this is deleterious to the district in our programming and clearly represents regression for the district. You know, as I say, I don't think any of these cuts are desirable. However, in making difficult decisions, you look to keeping your academic core intact and also reasonable class sizes intact as well. So that's the, the status quo. The last phase of the budgetary process as far as the state with regard to the revenue piece is the conference committee, which should be taking place during the course of this month. And typically, the state has finalized its budget somewhere in the window around July 4th to July 15th. So we knew it was going to be challenging, we knew we had to have certain things break our way, and unfortunately, they did not, both on the revenue and the expense side.
All right. All right, understood. So is there anything, is there anything more we can do to communicate out this information to the, to the public, to the towns and everybody, the parents?
I think, I think there's got to be a concerted effort, and maybe this is start of the work of the budget subcommittee. And I would actually make the recommendation that our budget subcommittee actually schedule a meeting in June, for the simple reason that let's start communication and let's start the campaign for the FY 21 budget. I think typically, we wait until usually before Thanksgiving for the first meeting, and we start talking about, you know, what is the forecast and so on. I think we've got to be very, very concentrated in our efforts. And part of this is around communication and part of this is around development of strategy. We all know around this table, but also in both towns, know that FY 21 is not going to be easier. To the contrary, it's probably going to be more difficult. We've discussed, when we met as a multi-board, that clearly additional revenue is needed, clearly additional revenue from our local communities because of the situation with target share. So the onus is going to be on our two communities. And I think essentially, boiling this down to a simple question of what are the types of programs, services, and quality of schools do you want for your children and that kind of thing? It's that simple of a question. So again, I think it's around communication, facts. I think we have to look at this from a fact-based perspective and not emotionally. And we need to start sooner rather than later.
Yep, I agree. So, so when we talk about, when we talk about a meeting in June and then having, having follow-ons through the summer, probably, to get everybody up to speed on what's happening and building a fact-based communication plan for that, is there, is there something we can do to incorporate representatives from the towns to do that, or?
I think that would be a wonderful idea. I mean, if you think about it, we, per our, actually, it's district-wide policy under subcommittees, we always involve a representative from each FINCA, right? I think we need to publicize budget subcommittee meetings more, probably more than our regular school committee meetings. I think we need to figure out the whole piece. We put on agendas things like public comment. Well, why don't we actually invite people to these meetings and invite people to weigh in on public comment? Why don't we think about strategically, maybe making every single budget subcommittee meeting thematic in its approach?
Yeah.
And talking about, okay, the budget subcommittee meeting on August 5th is going to be focused on transportation. And the one on August 25th is going to be focused on special education. And some of the stressors programmatically, but also to the budget, that really are driving some of our increases. So I think that has to be part of the approach.
Yeah, I, that's excellent. That's an excellent idea.
And I think, I also think from a PR perspective, I do think the town of Upton got it right with trying things out of the box, you know, for example, the YouTube videos that were done in advance of their town meeting, you know? There's no reason we can't do that. I don't mind obviously being the face of the district, but we have plenty of other people, some of which are sitting right in front of me right now, who also could be voices of the district. You know, for example, you know, what John and Mary Ann just presented around Portrait of a Graduate and what that means and why that work is so vital to continue, and even having students speak to it, you know? So I think we've got the capacity, we have the right people around the table, and we have the right people around the district to do this communication piece.
Great. You'll just act as the video editor for the district.
I'll also do the graphic design, just to, I enjoy that.
The one other thing I'd like to add is, we going, looking forward to FY 21, we are going to be negotiating with all of our unions, we're going to be going out to bid for transportation. I think it is imperative that we do our negotiations in September and not in February, March, like we did the last time, because if we don't really know what salary's going to be, it's going to be really hard to build a budget for FY 21. So I think, I don't know how we accomplish that with the union vote. I think we need to start early, not late.
Good point. So if we get together in June, will we be able to have a hypothetical budget projection for next year?
We can model things.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I...
I know there's a lot of unknowns.
I can do that real easily. I, you know, I've already done it partially.
That would be good. Because that'll give a basis to talk to people that I think will be a little bit more grounded than just hypothetical.
Well, to your point too, Bill, is there a way that we can, because I did a little bit of the fiddling with the Chapter 70 spreadsheet that they publish online, but is there a way that we can reasonably project what the impact on the town is going to be, not just from a budget... from a budget standpoint, but as far as state funding, all the different variables that go on, and we can actually change the variables and show people what their impact is of having different elements of the budget change? So for instance, state, state funding, you know, the ability to increase the transportation funding from the state, what would we do? Just to give people perspective as to what our real dilemma is here.
I do think, you know, just very quickly, I think we can anticipate in FY 21 that our Chapter 70 is going to start at 20 bucks a student and probably get to a big whopping 30, and transportation is probably going to be flat.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we can hope for more, but I think that's what we have to build based on, is that things are going to be pretty much the status quo, which means what?
Yeah, I agree.
Thirty or forty thousand dollars from the state.
Yeah.
Minimum contributions just factor into what the towns have to pay. I think they're probably going to be similar to what they were this year as well. But again, you know, we went through this this year, the towns both had five and 600,000 dollar increases, but they really couldn't afford that within their operational budget without spending all of their money on the schools. I don't think that's changing next year.
I just, I'm concerned about the misinformation that ends up going around and the confusion that all of that causes. And I think the meetings you're suggesting and the open forums are going to really combat that if we have some good examples, so.
Okay.
Anybody want to add anything more? All right, let's move on to the next topic, which is new business.
Okay, so let's flip it and go from dark to light, okay? So we received probably a little bit, about a month ago now, the news, outstanding news that Misco Hill Middle School has received a grant from the American Student Assistance Organization for the amount of $99,700 for the creation of the Misco Hill Inspired Innovation Center, which is a makerspace. So this really was a team effort of a lot of players, but I've got to give major props, major credit to Dave Quinn, who really has spearheaded this, he has really been the heart and soul of this and the primary author of this grant. So hats off, kudos. I've asked Dave to just kind of give a thumbnail sketch of what the grant will entail and what it means for our kids. So Dave.
Thank you, Joe. I think you're being far too generous in how you're describing this. This was a total team effort from you, you know, baiting the hook and getting the meeting.
I just schmoozed a little.
You schmoozed a lot. But to, you know, Jen Mannion, Maureen Cohen, who were in that initial meeting, Paul Marshall, who's been instrumental in providing feedback, the fifth grade team, the department chairs at Misco Hill Middle School, Beth Tervay, Paul Schwab, the list of people just goes on and on, and it really is a team effort. This has also been a rather long process. It started with what was perceived as an informal conversation on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. And, you know, we kind of saw this as an opportunity just to kind of sell some of the things that we were doing, some of the grants that we had already processed, and then all of a sudden, it took this really sharp turn. And Representative ASA started saying, well, what's your vision for this makerspace? And what would you do with the money if you got it? And all of a sudden, it went from being this informal meeting to an on-the-spot interview. And what resulted was the greatest performance of improv I've seen from a collection of people, where we started talking about how we want to put a digital media lab in here and there would be a Raspberry Pi setup. We'd have a fleet of 3D printers so that students could get involved in digital fabrication with laser cutters and CNC cutters. And it got to the point where I think we bludgeoned this poor person, and she said, wow, I'd really like to go, I'd really like for my daughter to go to school here, if this is what you're planning. So we knew that we were in pretty good shape leading into it, but it was only as a result of all the people sitting at that table. So what's come out of it is the Inspired Innovation Center, and you'll note that it's really tied into the strategic plan, taking from John and Mary Ann's thread. We wanted this as a means of continuing to communicate what our core values are and what the core competencies are, and how do we create a space that helps make those a reality? So I just kind of frame it out of who, what, where, when, how. So again, it's a three-year grant. We get the resources to reframe our curriculum and also put in the resources for items that are not possible. What ASA gets out of it is they're really curious about how experience in middle school can shape students on their career and career trajectory. Where we've kind of co-opted a little bit, we want our students not just to think of themselves as future employees, but future entrepreneurs, that they're job creators, because we strongly believe, and again, this is throughout our strategic plan, that, you know, the future is not something that happens to our students, the future is something that they create. And we want them to leave empowered, and we see this as a springboard to launch them into NIMCO and then hopefully to continue the thread throughout the district. So as Joe said, you know, we received a grant for $99,700, the max was $100,000, so I didn't want to be greedy, so I left, you know, 300 on the table. So the next part of the what, so what is this going to be? And I think when we were imagining this at the table and we're talking with groups, I don't know if we have any Harry Potter fans in the audience, but anybody know what this is?
Room requirement.
Room requirement, right? So it's a space that whenever a Hogwarts student needed something or knew this space, they would be able to have it. And that's how we thought about what would the room requirement look like for Misco Hill Middle School students? And that's really awesome, but it also really abstracts, we need to look at what are some actual examples that we could draw from? So we started thinking about who's done this really well, and at the Albemarle Public Schools in Virginia, they're some of the national leaders of this work. This is an image from their high school makerspace, which is part, you know, you've got that digital media lab piece of it where students editing, I think, a podcast, see the fleet of 3D printers, and then on the other side of the glass wall, there's woodworking, there's laser cutters within there. So this is what's possible in schools, but let's also think a little bit aspirationally. So, you know, MIT is right down the road, we've been fortunate to cultivate some relationships with some folks at the media lab. Part of the assessment that we're looking to do draws from their maker elements. So we also started thinking about what if we thought of this partially like a fabrication lab? So could we get students thinking about what digital manufacturing might look like? So we're thinking about more of like a 3D scanner, so could we get the laser cutter, you know, get 3D printing? So these are just all kind of ideas that we're tossing around. And what we really love about it is it builds up the existing work that our students are doing, but we just can't do it on a regular basis because we don't have the space and necessarily the resources. So this is not necessarily new work that's going to be going on, but now we're starting to expand access, so this is a regular part of the student's experience. And then this, you know, so what do we, what do we envision? So hands-on working with woodworking. That image all the way to the left, the student is doing, putting some screws into a board, but believe it or not, it's actually tying into the Raspberry Pi project on the right-hand side, where those are going to be acting as conductors for sensors. In the middle, you'll see the beginnings of a roll block where a student is working to attach lights to a mini Arduino board to introduce them to simple programming, but also robotics that are interacting. So again, it's stuff that our students are already familiar with, but now we can try to start to do it a little bit again. So how do we think about it structurally? So it's not just the space, we've got this innovation center, but how does this impact the work that we're doing curriculumally? We thought that we'd get our biggest bang for our buck focusing on the fifth grade, right? So we get four years with these students, let's invest right up front, talking to them about design and modeling. And this was a great opportunity that Maureen and Jen brought in with Project Lead the Way. We're starting to get more opportunities there, so the fifth grade curriculum is going to be, technology curriculum, Beth Tervay is going to be remaking that to reframe the class around, Project Lead the Way is gateway program, all-around design and modeling. It's about, let's say, a nine-week course that focuses on students coming up with a solution. I believe it's an assistive toy for a student has physical challenges. And we believe this will set the tone for all the other projects. We also envision this space as an open access area because we want teachers to bring traditional academic curriculum into this space to reimagine what their projects look like. What the hope is, is that the resources in there will help students to be able to create meaningful products that they want to take home with them and that they treasure because they see themselves in the product, but they now can connect themselves to the product to the curriculum. So it's both the fifth grade technology class along with open access. Also, as part of the grant, we are going to be purchasing the Naviance Career Counseling software. We already have it up at the high school, but this will be brought down to the middle school. What we believe this data will provide us is just information about what our students' initial interests are. So this information we share with guidance and also our teachers so that that way they have a better understanding of what our students' interests are, and we can link the curriculum to those interests. We'll also have a curriculum in year two for the, for the budgeted, for years two and years three, to do a deeper dive into that career counseling piece, which is really important to ASA. And then finally, there's going to be a big community outreach piece. This program will only be as successful as the people get involved in it. And we're going to need folks from the business and the tech community to share their insights about what's really going on in the world, so that way what we're providing in the Innovation Center mirrors what's going out, and what's on the cutting edge of employment and technology for today. So where is this going to be currently? It's, we're slated to repurpose the Room 305, which was originally the Home Economics Room. There's a lot of power already set up there, there's a lot of water. Currently, the space is divided, so as of right now, we're going to take down that wall. And what's really nice about this space is it allows for up to two classes to be in there at once. So you can still have your fifth grade in there, but then if your history teacher or science teacher want to come in and use the resources, he or she could too. One of the things that we're focusing on with our purchasing is how do we make these resources mobile and check about? Because ultimately, while we see the Inspired Innovation Center as a hub, we need a lot of spokes to the classroom. So every classroom has the ability to become a makerspace as needed. And then finally, how can I get involved? So over the next couple of months, we're going to be putting in some planning for community involvement. I think the first piece of it that we'll see in September is something we're calling the Misco Match. The best way to leverage the resources that we're provided is enabling the community to provide or donate things that we may need, so we don't have to buy them. So if mom's got an old toolset that she wants to repurpose and she's been, you know, bugging dad to please let me go down to Home Depot, this is a perfect time to donate your old tools or gently-used tools or saw. If dad is interested in sewing and has a sewing machine, he is more than welcome to bring it down, because I'm sure we've got an student who's interested in that. So anything that we can get matched into the Innovation Center can be repurposed to other resources. We're also going to be starting a Inspired Innovation Center Advisory Board. This will be a quarterly group that would meet just to be updated about what's going on within the Inspired Innovation Center, the programming, our potential purposes. And what we'd like to do is get parents and other community members involved to help guide us and help us think through some of those decisions. And then finally, and I think most upcoming, is our summer planning in PD. June 17th and 18th, we are tentatively scheduled, Pam Moran and Ira Sokol. Pam is the former superintendent of Albemarle Public Schools, and Ira was their technology director. They helped develop that lab that you saw in the, in the earlier image. We're bringing in national experts to help us with this work.
So July, right?
Yeah, July.
Okay.
July 17th and 18th. This is going to be an open session. I think it's important to all of us that we have teachers, students, and community members in there. So part of it will just be us to be building and understanding what the tools are, but also setting up, because I think there's power in a collaborative creation of this space together with a, and we'll have a ribbon cutting scheduled for September with the week of the talk. Would love to have any, any of you, even if it's for a couple hours or a day, on the 17th and 18th. But that's, that's our plan for, that's the thumbnail sketch for right now.
So we can think of this as more of a platform for starting a variety of different technology subjects with our students?
Technology, but even more broadly than that. In our conversations with Pam and Ira, they also helped us start thinking about, well, what would it look like if we put a kitchen in there and provided opportunities for students who are interested in food preparation? So it's a way of drawing out interest in different skillsets for students. We purposely wrote the grant to be flexible in year two and three, because we don't know what we don't know yet. And we didn't want to be locked into a vision that didn't necessarily fit as we got more information to be able to move. So I think that's crucial for the overall success of what this space can be, because I think it's, well, the space is important, it's the cultural transformation that this space is going to yield, more so than the space itself.
Meaning example of that today, we had our eighth-grade teachers are working on the engineering design project. And in the past, it's been a menu of 10 items, and this year, they really worked on that project based approach with the student voice of choice. So students created, come up with problems, and then are designing solutions to those problems. Like you can't watch Netflix in the shower if you don't have a way to hold your phone. So the teachers, one of the teachers commented was, it'd be so cool if we had outlets in the ceiling so that kids could use power tools here. And I said, guess what? Next year, you will. And so it was a conversation around the flexibility of that space, and then strategic plan identifies flexible use of time and space. So we talked about how that's going to be a place that teachers can access, and the whole class doesn't have to go, there's a dedicated teacher in that space, so kids who are ready for the power tools can go, and kids who are still doing research and collaboration in the classroom can stay. So it's really going to be an amazing platform to launch to the next level of the work teachers are already doing.
Yeah.
I think you mentioned something about fifth grade. Is it going to initially be rolled out like as a pilot for the fifth grade and then out to everyone? So what's the timeframe?
So the plan for this year is for fifth grade to get the design and modeling, the focus of learning what's in the resources, with the thought that we're also going to have a student ambassador program, where we find that some of the best teachers in our building are actually our students, because they can bring awareness to our teachers about what resources are available or what might be possible. And then we anticipate the sixth grade curriculum would be revised alongside. We've also started a process for Inspired Innovation Fellows. We're looking for four teachers to kind of be our pioneers, to pilot what's possible, to take, you know, their math class or their science class and show their colleagues, hey, this is what we've done, this is what I've learned from the experience. And that gets our sixth, our seventh, our eighth graders in there already. And we expect to learn an awful lot from this first year, with the ultimate goal is that every student, every year, will have at least one project that uses the Inspired Innovation Resources Center. And I'm imagining it's probably going to be structured, at least to begin with. But if we're really successful, what it's going to look like is that as students, let's say, in history class, and he or she has an idea for something meaningful that they want to make to demonstrate their understanding, they're going down to that center to either work in that space or get the tool that they need. So it's less about teacher-directed and more like John and Mary talk about the student identifying what they're need or what they're interested in to be able to get that resource there. Hopefully also open after-school as well for students to do more tinkering, because, you know, as Jen was saying about the flexible use of time, we're working on a garden project, Mrs. Repose and I are working on a garden project, and those 45 minutes, those guys go by quick. So we need time for the students to do deep learning. And then one last thing, I also think it's a really awesome opportunity for teachers to engage in deep learning, because they, we all need that, right? Like I thrive off of it personally, I know my colleagues do as well. So we see the spaces not just for student learning, but also for adult learning as well.
Cool. Any other comments? Good. Can't wait to hear about the next step.
Thank you, David.
We have a few new business items here. Want to go through the other two?
Yeah, sure, absolutely. I think tonight, we'd be well-served to kind of start the conversation around athletic user fees. Keep in mind, the last three fiscal years, we have level-funded athletics, both at Misco. Realize our, the Misco program, for all intents and purposes, is user-funded, okay? We only have a contribution, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, of $10,000 towards transportation comes out of the operational budget. The NIMCO program is obviously a little bit more complex and has more sports, more involvement, more expenditures. However, we're finding ourselves in a situation where we're looking at for the second straight fiscal year, a shortfall. So maybe, Jay, if you could talk a little bit about some of those challenges, and I know our athletic directors are also here as well to kind of speak to it, but maybe just to talk about the finances?
Sure. As Joe said, we have level-funded athletics for the foreseeable past, I would say, last three or four years. The problem we're running into with that is although what we put in financially in the operating budget has stayed the same, things like coaches' salaries and transportation and cost of tournaments and all of the things that takes, that it takes to run the programs has continued to go up. So we're finding now that, quite honestly, we don't have enough money coming in with the fees at the structure they're at to cover the cost of the program. the fees at the structure they're at to cover the cost of the programs. The middle school, I know that Scott's transportation costs, we funded ten thousand. I want to say they were around eighteen or nineteen thousand last year, and the rest was made up through user fees. At the high school level, you know, we did have a shortfall last year that I was able to balance off because we had enough operational funds that I could, in essence, transfer expenses to the operational budget to cover that. We're not going to have that opportunity this year. We're not going to have that opportunity next year because next year's budget is so much tighter than this year's budget was. We had so many unforeseen issues that I can't imagine it's going to be any better. So I think the bottom line is that our fees, although I don't, I've done a little bit of research on where our fees are in relation to other districts. I don't think they're higher or lower. I think we're about average. I do think when you're looking at layoffs of teachers, you can't really commit more operational budgets to the operational funds, to the budget, which means the only other recourse is to raise athletic fees. I'm going to defer to Chris and Scott as far as their specific programs. I have some ideas of where I think the fees should go, which hopefully would just barely offset the shortfalls we're running into. And it also means that we have to run really lean programs next year regardless. But I would defer to Chris and Scott.
I mean, I think Jay said a lot of it. I mean, one of the big issues that we have at the high school is we're sort of, I guess, if you want to call it victims of our own success, in that our teams have been very successful. With that comes transportation costs that are somewhat difficult to predict. You know, best example I can give you, one day, I think my soccer team is going to Worcester, and later that day, I found out they're going to Woburn. And the cost of a bus from Worcester to Woburn is at least double, give or take. And, you know, as far as the formula goes, it's a little bit different. But transportation costs are a big part of what we go through. Coaches' salaries increase, which, I mean, it is what it is. We need to pay our coaches. Referee costs increase, the more games we play, the more refs we have to pay. If we're not traveling, we're paying referees. So as much as Jay and I attempt to do our best to predict and budget as best as possible, it's hard to guarantee that, you know, multiple teams are going to go to a state championship or, you know, those are the types of things, you know, you've got track fees that come up with tournaments that they enter. Kids are doing well. We want to support them. And sometimes that means going out to Westfield or into Reggie Lewis in Boston. And those are the types of things that are difficult to predict. You know, I think, you know, both Jay and I worked together this year to trim whatever fat we have, if you want to call it that. I don't think it's much, if anything. I think we were pretty fiscally conservative with what we tried to do. Our teams did well, which is a great thing. But at the same time, you've got to be able to support that. So that's sort of where our challenges lie.
Myself, this, every year seems to get tougher. Like, I do a lot of fundraising. So like, this was probably my worst year of fundraising. I don't know if it was. I sold pretzels, I sold cookie dough, I had Boys vs. Girls game, dodgeball tournament I never had because just the participation wasn't there. I had thirty teams last year. I had nineteen signed up this year. My Boys vs. Girls game, you know, even though last year was still less, we just didn't have the participation, people coming. The cookie dough is my biggest fundraiser, probably sixty, eight thousand. I mean, it's a lot for this program. You know, it was down this year. I tried pretzels this year, I'll never do it again. I have pretzels in my office stacked up high.
They're pretty good, though.
They are pretty good. So I've been, I've been just pretty much, you know, dating along. I always end up at the end of the year with about seven or eight thousand dollars. I never have enough money to, you know, we need better basketball hoops, or basketball backboards are falling apart. I have field hockey nets that are, you know, I go out there every year now, got a field hockey program in, you know, shoot me, keep them the best I can together so they can, we can play a game. So I know that you guys have some numbers. And I put together some numbers based on fees to present, you know, today, this year, we had forty-three thousand dollars of fees that kids paid at one seventy-five. If we were to raise it to two twenty-five, we'd be at fifty-five thousand. Two fifty, this is based on a participation of two hundred and forty-eight kids, sixty-two thousand, with my expenditure this year of sixty thousand. So that would pretty much cover, a two fifty would cover the budget. And hopefully, with some still fundraising, we'll be able to put back in the program and, you know, get the new uniforms that are coming up, maybe get some new nets, maybe get some cooperative with the youth, with the basketball hoops and stuff. So, you know, that's where I'm at. But it seems like every year, you know, I think parents would rather say, here, here's the money upfront and not worry about all the selling and stuff. I'd have to change my fundraisers to a different avenue besides selling. But we're dangling right now with the fees and stuff to keep the program afloat, or as it is.
Well, I mean, I mean, just, it makes more sense to keep the athletic program solvent than to keep on taking from the operational budget, especially when we're talking about budget shortfalls that are coming up in the future, so.
Like I said, I was able to do it last year because we finished stronger last year. This year, we had so many unforeseen issues with building maintenance stuff that we're going to just barely sweep by. You know, not only do we need to overcome what's going to be a shortfall in the NIMU budget, you know, the middle school one is only down like fifteen hundred from where it started, but it started with around eight thousand. The high school program started with about five hundred. It's going to be down substantially. We need to make that up. I would agree that the fees need to go to around two fifty. I know that sounds like a large increase, but that would bring in about thirty-five thousand to the high school program. That should hopefully settle it out. And then we just have to be really, really strict next year about what we do, which doesn't really help the program because, you know, Chris has done a really good job of building that program up. We've got successful teams. We had uniforms that were worn out that we needed to replace. We may have to postpone some of that for a year or so just to make sure we can get things back on the right track. But we can't continue to run at the one ninety-five. If we do that, we either need to put money into the operational budget or cut programs. And I don't think that's the way to go at this point.
Right, right.
Just to jump into about, you know, I appreciate the program is strong, it is our winning, but one of the things Mary Ann and I appreciate is that we have a much more detailed understanding of the granular level of the budget. When Chris puts the budget together, it's broken down by team, including not only salaries and transportation, but down granular to the number of pairs of socks we're going to be buying, a number of replacement balls. So we now are able to predict the per-athlete cost in a way that I think has developed over the course of his tenure here, where we have a really clear understanding of the budget. It's a complicated budget to estimate and to manage. And so while I've heard we've had some success and that's added additional costs, I think one of the things that I've appreciated through the past few years is just gaining an understanding, deeper, more detailed understanding what the cost of the program is. And through that, I've also seen our school thrive. And the program thriving, it's been a benefit to the school. So I think you never want to go back and say, we're going to be raising fees at the same time, having a clear understanding of the budget and seeing this gap and knowing the strength that it is for NIMU. I think it does make sense to move them up.
So what would the next steps be for presenting this to the public?
In my opinion, I think you'd be well-served to think about it over the next two weeks. We have one more meeting before summer recess. We can share with you data. I've got a peer, this is a formal survey that's done of all the fees across all the districts and all the charters. And some of the data is very good. Some of the data, quite frankly, is a little outdated, but it'll give you a perspective on what all the communities across the Commonwealth are charging. And then we can also share with you the detailed spreadsheets for both the middle school and the high school programs. So you can see with a greater degree of specificity of what Jay is speaking about, and then make the decision on it at our next meeting, two weeks from tonight. That would be my recommendation.
Very good. Anybody have any opinions about this?
So you're going to send that to us?
Yes.
Can you send us the updated athletic budgets as well, just so we can take a look at them? Which I agree, it is much more detailed than it's ever been, and I know you guys do a great job managing it. The other item, I guess I'd bring up is, is there a thought of going to a tiered fee structure for the ones, for the sports that are more expensive to run versus the other ones that are not?
I think that's in the realm of possibility. I think there's pros and cons to it.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think there are pros and cons. I think what you have to be careful of is a lot of, tiers are great if your number of athletes in a sport is particularly high. In some, my only concern with some, maybe in, you know, the running sports in particular, who, where you do see schools that have a tiered, their fees are less, but in a lot of cases, their numbers are higher. So they're able to make up for it that way.
No, I understand. I don't mean it's just about running. I think it's also about, you know, if I look at soccer versus football, for example, football is a more expensive sport to run. If you look at the town fee structures, the town soccer programs have a different fee structure than the town football programs as well. I'm just looking at it from some of those basic realities of what's out there.
Yeah, and that's the other way, is, yeah, looking, you know, typically, you have football, hockey, which I know we don't have. Those are your two that you typically see that are higher.
I think we can model it, Phil.
I think it's just something, it's, I don't, I'm not saying we'll go there, but it's something to look at. I think with the data before, I think it was a little more difficult to do, but now that you've got a lot more detailed data behind it, maybe that's, maybe that's an avenue as well. It's just a thought. But I do agree with Chung with what you said before. It's kind of like, we have to, we have to look at doing something, you know, because if we're basically reducing staff, and as we look at next year, we need to make sure that we're kind of balancing those things out.
Any other comments?
All right. Moving on to the World Challenge trip.
Okay, last but not least, you have in your packet for approval, a request for a world travel trip to Thailand. And now, this one is going to be in July of 2021. If you recall, the co-advisors came before the committee back in November for approval of a world challenge trip next summer in Morocco, but unfortunately, they did not have sufficient numbers or sufficient interest in that. So I think they retooled things, and now they're looking for approval for the following summer for a trip to Thailand. I don't know, John, if you have anything to add?
Tell you, you got, and one of the neat things was they talked to the student who's signed up for Morocco and involved him in the planning session with the World Challenge group and helped, and he had, first say, in kind of picking this Thailand trip and then bouncing off of their ideas. So really cool element of student agency there, but we're big believers in World Challenge. They do an awesome job. The support is fantastic. We had a couple of health issues come up while students were on their trip to Iceland. Their center was in communication with me, non-stop, constant updates, support to parents, rave reviews. They do a great job. It's not your typical field trip. It's a service trip, leadership trip, and also get to see the world and experience global citizenship. So we're big fans of World Challenge.
We've been doing it for, what, fifteen years, probably at least? Yeah.
So I guess, I guess we've got to entertain a motion for approving, approving the World Challenge trip.
Make a motion to approve the World Challenge trip to Thailand, summer of 2021.
Second.
Very good. We can battle it out, who gives us that extra credit? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Last couple of things on the agenda. Any correspondence?
We do not have any.
Any other matters not anticipated by the committee? It's been forty-eight hours of the posted meeting. None seen. So future agenda items will be the Golden Apple Award on June seventeenth and a new Mersey calendar on June seventeenth as well. So.
Well, discussion. If you recall, yeah, it isn't necessarily new, but if you recall, the student who brought that issue to the attention.
Okay.
We'll continue that conversation.
Okay, very. All right, so with that, we'll adjourn.
Motion for adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
For adjourn.